All right, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, June nineteenth. Call our meeting to order and start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have a roll call.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Kuhlman, Alinger, Holm.
Yes.
Okay, next is the approval of tonight's agenda. We have a motion by Callister.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
All right, next we come to the presentations. Is there anybody in the audience who wish to address the council?
Richard has his hand up.
Okay, Richard?
Yes, I just want to thank Josh Bolt for coming and talking to several individuals at the River Village One. And I just encourage the council when they get time as well to talk to their constituents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Anybody else in Zoom land? If not, we'll move on. Next will be our Traffic Safety Action Plan.
Thank you, council, mayor. I will go ahead and share my screen and this is this is the most extensive public feedback document that we've ever done ourselves. And I probably severely underestimate how much feedback we get. And so, as Richard was saying, this turned into meeting various civic groups, Kiwanis Rotary, Optimists, I met with the Micronesian leaders of the community as well. River Village, I talked to the elementary schools, I talked to middle school, just trying to get a whole picture on what actual focus groups would be willing to tell me about where they see as concerning traffic safety spots. And by traffic safety, I mean vehicles, I mean people walking, using walkers or using some sort of motorized assist. Blind spots you might see on the road, stop sign versus yield sign needs, where people feel they're speeding or where perhaps turning is too tight, like a South Main Street and Summit. And just trying to gather some more information so that we can help Frank with painting and signage. We can apply for grants based off of this Traffic Safety Action Plan. And that's why we marched down this endeavor. The Public Safety Commission and Katie Pauls and Paul Haley were kind enough to volunteer and form a formal Traffic Safety Action Plan Task Force. And together, we put together a document that really kind of puts into perspective a number of different commonalities we saw across many of our data points, being those surveys that were in utility bills, but also focus groups. And then also comparing what we are seeing in those responses against what DOT, the Department of Transportation, is actually recording in crash map data. So if you are ever very, very bored and want to look into how accidents happen in the state of Iowa, what a mapping system they have through the Iowa DOT. I'm not sure if the chief uses it or not, or has had to. But, I mean, you can sit there and narrow down the type of accident, down to the block and cause, is it stop signs, angle, is it rear end? And you can start to draw heat maps on the map. So it was really helpful to put that together and kind of understand some things, so. So I will go through this document just a bit. It won't take too terribly long, but just to help you understand where some things might be if you want to refer to this at a later time. It's here. I generally describe at the front in this plan why we did this and what our goals are. And that was to have zero fatalities, which we had just in a nominee event a number of years ago out on the highway that wasn't ours, but we did have one in our area. And also to reduce severe injury accidents. And to have those goals have to be zero by June thirtieth of twenty seven. We start immediately by going through our general community profile. Start talking about our present state analysis, where we go over some of the information that's already available to us in the Road Use Tax Fund. Take a few photos of some of the areas that are high concern to us as we move forward in this plan. There's a great deal of pages dedicated to focus group data. And also what happens with our crash map data as well. And so when you think about traffic safety and some of those concerned residents, such as River Village or kids walking to school, we tried to get to meet those groups, those more at-risk groups, to understand why they think something's a traffic issue. And so, for example, at Briggs Elementary, I learned a lot about what some of the problems are at Quarry Street. One, it's a twenty-eight-foot road, which is pretty thin for our set of roads here in the community. But also when you have errant kids and no fence around the park and some of these other problems. And depending on the time of the year, that sun is going to be on sunrise, direct, looking down Quarry. Got to learn a lot about what some of the challenges are. In terms of coming up with those commonalities, as I mentioned, what I did was, a lot of the survey responses very often talked about similar problems. And what I did was assign project codes to them, and there ended up being, I believe, twenty-eight project codes. And, you know, we can't bite all that off at once. But with some time, with some focus, and with some resources that are available to us in our Road Use Tax Fund and hopefully some grants, I used an Eisenhower decision-making model, which is a classic urgency-importance model that you divide out by quadrants. And kind of thought about each project code, as I mentioned, that people reviewing as a common problem. And assigning that to something that's both urgent and important versus urgent but not important. But I'm not calling it not important. It just doesn't need to be handled in the next zero to twenty-four months, for example. It doesn't mean it's not important. It could be handled the next four years as we move forward in this goal set, so. There's a lot of information that we went through with this. And I attached a lot of survey responses at the back of this document, which is why it's as big as it is. But it will be posted on the website and available for review. I want to thank a lot of the community, many of you, the civic clubs. You know, it was really interesting to do this project because I kind of feel like I got to know the town a little bit better. I spent a lot of time in my office, and it was neat to meet people and to see what people were talking about in terms of blind spot issues. If there's a bad stop sign somewhere, if there's bad paint. I would say that by far and wide, it seemed to me that the biggest problem that we have in terms of safety from both crash points and also what people were saying is South Main and Summit Street. And so, we're taking a look at some options right now to see what kind of help ECIA and some other outside sources will be able to help us out with with that. One, it's good for business. Two, that's turning on the industrial loop. I mean, the new company that came in control very quickly was, you know, telephoning us, saying, hey, we have a turning problem here. And it's, hey, we know. But what can we do with what's there in private property rights? So these are things that we're actively moving forward, moving forward on aggressively. So we'll see how that turns out. And again, I just want to go back to thanking everyone that was involved with this because there's a lot of people that put this together, not just me. And I want to thank the Public Safety Commission and the task force for having a moment to sit down and think about some of the issues out there. I know that Chief has been working on some speeding objectives here too recently that might lead to some updated signage. So we're hoping to put together some good things as a result of this plan. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Well, we'll move on to item seven, and that is our consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the June fifth, twenty twenty-three regular city council meeting. The bill's payable through June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. We also have an approval of a new Class C retail alcohol license filed by the Macoca Firefighters Association. We have the May financial reports and.
Go ahead.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon. Seconded by Rick Earl. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Next is old business. Appears we don't have any old business, so we'll move on to nine, new business. Which is, item A is a resolution approving a bid in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, submitted by Prairie Road Builders for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Alley Seal Coat Project. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor and council. This was rebid, as you know. This job won't be done by July first. That was one of our prior requests at our prior bidding that ultimately led to, I think, some higher prices. So we extended this one out to, what, October first, Frank? October first? And we ended up on a single bid at about twelve thousand less than what we were previously proposing. And so I think this is a good deal. It finishes the alley project. And you have my recommendation to go ahead and approve it. Anything else to add, Frank?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion by Rick Earl.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Holm. Do we have any discussion on this? If we don't, then go ahead and take the roll.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, that resolution passes. Item B is a resolution adopting the Traffic Safety Action Plan.
Well, I'm not going to go over what I just talked about. I don't think that you guys want to listen to it over again unless you found it more interesting or have more questions. But I'm just recommending approval of this, and we'll have it posted to our website for review.
Do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion by Simonson.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. And if we have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item C is a resolution approving change order number fourteen in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven dollars, one hundred eighty-seven, five hundred ten dollars and forty-three cents for the Platt Street program project.
Thank you, mayor, council. I, you know, that might seem like a large number, but I guess what I'm going to sit here and start out with is I can't tell you how pleased I am that we're at this point. I mean, Frank and I Friday were just over the moon happy that we're at this spot. And so, at our last council meeting that we discussed anything Platt Street related, we were looking at some much larger numbers. And, you know, it didn't mean that we were about to agree to those prices. And then there was some language concern about whether or not we should even be taking any action. We stepped back and DOT did something of a preliminary final walkthrough with us and came out with a substantial punch list that Andy of, with Origin, has been just phenomenal with DOT working with them about why something applies or doesn't apply, or why something is the contractor's full responsibility for. And what you're looking at tonight is mostly a reconciliation of what we've talked about before, dating back to summer and fall last year, where I presented something to you as a consideration. Or in one instance, I made an emergency phone call to every single council member where I said, hey, there's an underground issue here that can't wait for the next two weeks because they have to move forward. And we authorize some things that way. So in terms of keeping you informed and up to date with the entire project, we did a few of those steps, and this comes to reconcile a few of those actions. It removes planters entirely and substitutes bricks that we own, including the historic ones that are at the yard and including the ones that are at Alvin Platt Street on the northeast corner. And so when you look at this number and when you look at what we've been up against the last few months, there's a few things that are still unresolved, so to speak. But the prices that you're looking at, I guess the contract unit prices are what's reflected at the original contract price, not twenty twenty-three price, or just a contractor's quote or estimate all of a sudden. So that's part of what you're seeing here as well. And Andy's been working extremely hard with this and probably has been working on it full-time and can probably add quite a bit more. So I'll shortly defer to Andy for any clarifications. And Frank, maybe if I missed something too, feel free to pipe in. But we've got chick fries clearance to move forward in this change order. A yes vote is on the end of, you know, it's a strong suggestion to approve this tonight. But it's time to move this forward. It's time to finish the job. And I think that we're all very happy to be at this point with where we're at, despite the number today. So we're told that chick fries ready to mobilize as soon as we're ready to go. Andy?
Good evening, mayor and council. That was a great description, Josh, of what's on this change order. There's really three main topics or issues covered by this change order. As Josh mentioned, there were some utility updates that needed to be made to get things finished last year, last fall. That's one main topic. Sorry, I'll start over. There's twenty-two items on this change order. Of those twenty-two items, nine of those items are related to those utility updates done last fall that Josh mentioned. Seven of the items are related to the planter beds being replaced with the city's brick pavers. And then five items are related to pavement patches behind the new sidewalks to make up elevations and drainage issues behind sidewalks to a number of properties mainly along East Platt Street. So of those three main issues that this change order is addressing, the utility costs associated with this change order are fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, or about fifty-five thousand dollars. The planter bed replacements actually resulted in almost fourteen thousand dollars worth of a net credit to the project by replacing all those plantings and their improvements with the brick pavers that the city already owns. And then the remaining one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and some changes attributed to the pavement tie-ins at those multiple properties, two of them being HMA pavement or hot mix asphalt, and the remaining six being PCC or Portland Cement Concrete Pavement. The change order, this change order fourteen, also added twenty-nine working days to the contract in light of, you know, some of the statements made by the contractor recently. I think that part of the change order really helped bring things around. You know, there's some significant work being added to the contract here, and so it's right that the schedule is adjusted accordingly as well. So that's kind of the real quick summary. I can get into a whole lot more detail on which items fall into which of those categories, if you'd like. Or if there are any questions on change order fourteen, I'd be happy to take them. And then just kind of a quick look ahead, we do know, as Josh mentioned, there are still items being addressed from that DOT walkthrough back in late May that will result in a change order fifteen. So I don't want to be deceptive here or anything like that. There will be another follow-up change order on this project that we're aware of to address questions that were brought to the table or the city made aware of as a result of the DOT walkthrough back in May. And as far as, you know, there's a lot of coordination to do with the design team to really hammer out the details of that change order, what scope will be included as far as additional work for the contractor. So a price, a specific price is hard to attribute to that change order yet. We know that the Arcade Street intersection, which will be on that change order, is roughly thirty thousand dollars or so worth of additional work. There are two similar intersections to Arcade Street, although not nearly as significant of rework needed at those two intersections. Perhaps a couple of curb ramps that yet need to be sorted out between the design team and the DOT's review personnel. And then other pedestrian push buttons, for example, were brought into question during that walkthrough. So there's a number of issues being still sorted out that will be completed on change order fifteen. Hopefully, I didn't muddy the waters there too much between change order fourteen that's on this agenda and change order fifteen that we know that is coming up. But I just wanted to make mayor and council and everyone aware that this, although this is, I think, good news, you know, it's a huge step in the right direction to completing this project. There is work yet to be done.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Callister, seconded by Lyon. Do we have any discussion? Go ahead and take the roll.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is a resolution approving change order in the amount of six thousand dollars for the South Main Trail Lighting Project.
Thank you, mayor and council. We were notified early last week, right Frank, of the locates down on South Main Street. You can't open dig them. There's a special boring that has to occur that they didn't realize until they located it. So, you know, the city split and this three, six thousand is three thousand because of the cost agreement we have with county on this. But we need to do our part tonight and I guess approve something of a change order for that South Main Lighting Trail project. The bids, the bid from MMEU was extraordinarily low and much better than private competition. I detail that we have a substantial fund balance available for where that's being drawn from, and I feel comfortable recommending this tonight.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
My resolution was approved. Item E is a discussion and possible motion regarding sale of surplus property.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm kind of seeking some direction on this item. I got, this is my, this is not our first one of surplus sale, but we did a surplus declaration. I didn't anticipate only one private bidder on our property, and this is the largest public surplus declaration we've had in quite some time. So I guess my best example in this is I think that we could take the Buick Century out to the junkyard for more than two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And DeKalb, I will mention DeKalb here because the Public Works Director, when I was serving as Assistant City Manager, brought the idea of using an auctioneer service where the buyer of property paid a buyer's premium of ten percent for a successful sale of source, just like a farm sale would do. But I think you have a few options on this. It would be accept the bid set as provided as it is here. You can reject all and have me and Frank pursue perhaps an agreement to put back with you a little bit here to find out if there's an auctioneer who'd be willing to do such an arrangement with this type of property. Or we can maybe accept just the private one. Or we rebid this as is again, but I think the point is, is we met all our minimum requirements for posting and put this together the way any other time we would. It's just this is not, I think, the way to do a successful public surplus sale. And I think there's other alternatives. So willing to hear your thoughts on this, and if you think I'm overthinking it, I'm willing to listen.
I think it's worth looking into, see if you can get an auction company to come in and do this, or at least find out what they have to say about it.
I'd go right to gov deals. Reject these bids, put it on gov deals. That's where everybody looks for surplus for government items.
That's a good idea.
Nationwide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're getting a better reach. I, I know it's been discussed with local auction. We can look that route. I just don't think you get the eyes that gov. I mean, it's just a specific website that everybody uses for this stuff, so. I'd make the motion to reject the bids.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second motion by Callister, seconded by Holm to reject the bids. Do we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, the bids are rejected. Item F is a resolution granting Macoca Betterment Corporation to be the fiscal sponsor and the chief fundraising body for the Green Space Redevelopment Project.
Thank you, mayor and council. This one's more, I guess, on the fund end. We've started the Summer Concert Series events, which have, I think, gone pretty well, maybe a little bit hot. And maybe a little bit confusing with some stages moving locations and these things. So it's, I think we're at a final resting point for where people would like a stage to end up being permanently. So this one, it's interesting to me because, you know, we had a kind visit from Director Debbie Durham, and she largely supported this project after learning a little bit about it. But, you know, I also don't want to be presenting a full city responsibility to you someday. And it's important to us to think about private fundraising along the way. And so in meeting with the Betterment Corporation, which is a non-for-profit and traditionally used as a fundraising arm for the city, I think it's important that someone like me and the council doesn't get too involved with, you know, the city getting into this. And I think this is very much a private and non-for-profit sort of work. And so what this action would do is allow the Betterment Corporation to set up an escrow fund and allow a donor to receive the donation benefits along the way if they were to donate money. And so this is in part for that reason, but two, it signals something of the beginning of a support of the green space development so that we can move forward and finish the vision out on that square. I will mention that this is a non-binding resolution, but it does start to allow the Betterment Corporation to start setting up private fundraising, just like you'd expect that project to go and similar to how Good Now Field was executed. So we've had some helpful conversation with Bob Gavin, who, for an hour or so, acted as a kind of a consultant on how things went and what the timelines were and what it's like to start getting your first donations. And this puts forward a bit of a plan so that when we go for a grant, we have pledged and committed funds and received funds, and this is the way to do it, and I hope that you vote yes tonight.
I'll still approve. Who's the president of Betterment now? Is that Sarah?
Councilman Lyon, who's the active one. I have to defer to you.
President of Betterment?
Who's running? The chairing?
Um, I think Katie, actually. I think the other room, not the room. I'm like, oh, it's Katie. That's right. Katie is president.
We have a motion by Simonson. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Seconded by Holm. Any more discussion? Take the roll.
Callister.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Epstein.
Okay, do we have enough with that? Yeah, we do. That motion passes. Time for reports and communications. Anything from any city council members?
Mayor, we got one more.
One more.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry about that. We have a resolution approving department head and city manager salary increases of three point five percent.
We did that on purpose, didn't you?
Effective on July first. That's hoping we got a pay in this. Effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we had a, what was that? We had a motion by Simonson, seconded by Callister. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Callister.
Yes.
Okay, passes. Now we come to reports and communications. Any council member have any to report?
Has there been any discussion about a fire ban? I mean, fireworks are coming up here in like a week and a half.
We did talk about that today at department head, and in order to get a burn ban for the entire county, all fire chiefs must be in favor of that. And from the opinion of our fire chief, he doesn't believe that's possible.
Is that because it would impact Bellevue Heritage Days or what?
Yeah, it'd impact fireworks displays will prime and everything.
It seems like it's, the whole world is Tinder.
Our chief's general opinion of it today would be in favor of it. He has just some concern that the grass will get going or something will get going unintentionally, so that.
But it has to be countywide?
Yep.
Anybody else? City manager?
I don't have much. We'll enter closed session here soon. But I, you know, July third, Monday before July fourth, obviously. I just want to make sure we have a quorum, and if we don't, you know, is everyone planning to be here July third?
I was discussing that. Can we just move that meeting to the fifth? Does that not work? I just think that that's, everyone's probably going to be off. I don't know who will be around. I don't, I mean, I'll be here.
I personally had a commitment the fifth in the afternoon, but, you know, whether it's the third or even the sixth.
I don't care. I just thought that this, I don't know why I was thinking about it today, but I'm like, I wonder who was even going to show up to that meeting.
Do we need a meeting?
We need to approve bills. So it's a very, very short agenda, but we do, it's our first fight, meeting of the financial year, and we need to approve bills.
Uh-uh. Okay. Anybody not able to make it?
I will not be able to make it.
I'll be there.
I'm not sure yet what we're doing.
What do we want to do here?
Not.
The sixth would be what, Wednesday?
The Thursday.
Or Thursday? I had to wait to be thinking about this, I guess. Just go for Monday, I guess, and see what happens.
Yep, I know Judy is, so.
And if all else fails, if we needed an extra person and you weren't here, you could call in.
They could zoom in.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll zoom right in for you, Judy.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have an executive session. It's a closed session. Okay. Next, we have an executive session. It's a closed session pursuant to discussion of real estate. Chapter twenty-one, point five, one J.
And we'll go ahead and end the Zoom now. Thank you.
Motion to go on to executive session.
We have a motion by Colister?
Second.
Seconded by Rickroll. Uh, go ahead and take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickroll?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Colister?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister to adjourn, seconded by which one?
Lyon.
Seconded by.
Do we need a motion to enact what was discussion in the executive session?
I don't believe so.
We didn't really come up with anything, right?
I was just seeking consensus on a few items, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. If we have nothing else, take the roll.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, all in favor?